Workshop on code enforcement and specifically C Click Fix. Turn it right over to Sarah, I believe.
Yes, I'm going to take the lead. I'm going to take a moment to quick introduce Kim, who's our Planning Services Manager, and Jerry, who's our Chief Building Official. I'm going to take the lead for the presentation, though, and of course, if you have any questions at any point, shout them out. I know this crew, so don't be afraid. Nope. Might help to turn it on. There we go. Okay, because you guys know my personality now, I'm highly organized, and this is how I like to run things. The agenda that we have for tonight is four items. We're going to talk about our current code enforcement policy, the issues that we have with it, our staff's recommendation, and then I'm going to ask for some information from you guys so that we can move forward with some changes. Something I want to keep in mind as we move forward is code enforcement is a balance. It's not as simple as this is the code, you're breaking the code, you're in violation, therefore we're taking you to court and getting all these fees from you. There's a lot of things that we need to consider and a lot of things that staff take into consideration when we're moving forward, and I want you guys to kind of put that in the back of your mind as well as we move forward. So, one of the things is always is council's requests. We get those on the regular, and that's okay. We're very okay with that. We have more of a reactive enforcement right now, but there's also the option of having more of a proactive enforcement. We have differences in our residents. We have residents that would love to continuously click fixing their neighbors and having an HOA almost type neighborhood, and then we have some residents that very strongly feel it's their property, it's their right to use it how they see fit, and the city doesn't have any right to tell them how to do so. So just keep that in mind as we kind of go forward. There's a couple purposes and goals of code enforcement that I want to touch on before we really get into it. These are how I feel we should really look at code enforcement as we move forward. And keep in mind that this order doesn't indicate importance. All of these are important on their own right. We have the want of creating a fair and consistent response to anybody that comes forward with a complaint or adding a resident that we reach out to. We want to make sure that we're focusing what limited resources that we have, the highest impact within the community. We want to make sure that we're still supporting safety and property values, because we have to admit that's important within our community. And then also, and to me, this one is a little more important, is working on improving our communication and our transparency. I don't feel we're at the level that we could be with it, and that's always something that we can work to improve on, no matter how good we are. That's something we can work on. So let's talk a little bit about our current code enforcement policy and how this is handled. Keep in mind, this is not the same for each department and division. Today, I'm speaking more specifically about community development. There are a lot of departments and divisions that do some form of code enforcement. I would argue that we've got a lot of the variety within the code. So, we have an issue that is noticed on a property and staff is notified of it. There's a variety of ways that we're notified of it. Either email, C Click Fix, we'll get phone calls, we have the contact form on the website, or it could even be inspector or staff initiated. If we're out on about on something else, or somebody from a different division sees something, they'll forward it to us and let us know.
What's the most common?
Right now?
Yeah.
Tall grass, by far.
No, not the most common complaint, the most common way that you hear about it.
C Click Fix.
Okay.
I was hoping tall grass was still going to be.
I was like, "Tall grass." I was like, "I don't know that software." Where did we have that too?
Okay, moving on. We have, the property is typically inspected by staff, and we always have to determine if we feel it's a violation or not. More times than not, there is a violation, or we'll notice something else within the property or within the neighborhood that we see as an issue. We'll start a record if there is a violation. If not, we'll typically just close it and say that no violation was found. We'll send initial letters to the resident to inform them that we're aware of a violation on the property. There's a more extended process that involves inspection fees, and there's a three-step, I believe, three inspection fee options that we can do, and then we move to court citations and we take in legal. Usually Amy is our go-to for those. Love Amy, she's very helpful on those. And then, once we've gotten to that point, and if it's still not cleaned up, the last option that we kind of have at our disposal is either raising the property, but there is a threshold that it has to meet, or we clean it up, which is also a threshold that we have to meet. And both of those, correct me if I'm wrong, Lynn, require court approval before we're able to move forward with those. So that one is an option on certain properties, not all properties.
Sarah, while we're on this slide, just so I think I know the answer. Properties inspected by staff, every single time there's a complaint, whether it's open, closed, no matter what, right? This department inspects all?
Within our department, yes, we typically inspect. Every single complaint that comes through.
Perfect, thank you.
And in the current policy, is there a point where staff says, "Okay, well, maybe a variance is more appropriate here than actually enforcing the code?"
Yes, I would say that staff tries to work with any violations that might be found or nuances that might be found to make sure that we're not getting to that court case.
But we don't, to my first question, we do not have the ability currently to say we're not going to look at that, correct?
Not within this department and division.
I know others do.
It's just the direction that was given that we've been kind of sticking with to make sure that we're fair and consistent with every complaint that comes in. Yes, that's how we've been sticking with it. Yep. So there's some issues that obviously come up with that. One of those being, it's reaction-based. We don't have the ability at this time to focus on the real important cases or issues that we see within the community that we'd like to. So, I know some of you are on C Click Fix, and I know you're seeing those cases that come through. So you know that even if it's, for an example, today was an air conditioner that was in a window, and they didn't like the towel that was underneath it. We have to do something about that. We still have to take time, staff time, to at least respond to that request. So there are some changes we'd like to bring concerning code enforcement and how we're handling our things. There's no real consistency between the properties. We sometimes are seeing one property getting hit multiple times in a year even, whereas right down the block, they may not get touched at all, because we just don't have the time, or it's not coming through as a complaint through the system. And I know that we're all aware and suspect that there are people walking down blocks and just C Click fixing every home and property that they see, contributing to even more staff time on minor things. There's limited staffing and resources. We don't have any one person designated to code enforcement. The best we could probably come up with is in inspections. I think Mike is the highest percentage of his time as code enforcement, but he still also handles weights and measures for us. So it's spread, the resources are spread across the board with multiple divisions and staff working on it on some way, shape, or form. There's a wide range of potential violations. We have a very robust code and a lot of things that people feel strongly about, so that they would submit that through C Click Fix. That's something else that we have to kind of keep in mind. We try to prioritize health and safety as much as we can, but as Chris pointed out, we do try to respond to every complaint that comes in, so that people feel that we're addressing the issues as they come up. And then, of course, there's the inconsistent public expectations. We kind of touched on it. Some people feel very strongly that code enforcement is important and wish that we were doing it more often. Some people feel we're being too aggressive with our code enforcement. So there's always that balance. And then, I can definitely say, in the time that I've been here, I have seen steadily increased use of C Click Fixed for neighborhood disputes. People are definitely using the software. If they're getting upset with a neighbor, they're going back and forth, and it becomes very obvious to staff when we start to know addresses offhand and where they are and where they're located, based off of the cases and the constant number that come in in that area. So, we would like to try and see C Click Fix used for more of the tool that its original intention was, which was safety, but that's for another. We're going to try and focus on code enforcement, specifically within community development today. A little bit of C Click Fix later. Saying that, I'm going to head into just a little bit of C Click Fix data, just because we've discussed it in the past. So, within our C Click Fix software, there are 35 options that you can choose from when they have the drop-down box options. Currently, and I pulled some data for the last year, there are 16 options that have an open case going on right now. Some can be cleared up very quickly, some, like property maintenance, requires more time before we're able to actually close out the case. From July 1st and '24 to July 1st, '25, we had 2,700 cases, so an average of 230 a month. Obviously, that ebbs and flows depending on winter versus summer. You know, snow is more of an issue in the winter, but obviously during the summer, tall grass is very, very important to people. So, the average day to close, again, is 12, but you have to keep in mind, some things take longer, some things we can close out fairly quickly. And then, I also want to emphasize that these cases themselves are not managed in C Click Fix. They are managed through a different software called Evolve. C Click Fix is only used for people to report an issue that they see. If we do create a case or a citation through it, we direct them then to Evolve, which is also public-facing for them to be able to see the progression of that case. Karen?
How many of those, just off the top of your head, do you think are unique versus like, maybe two people reported the same address as tall grass?
That I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I could maybe dig into the C Click Fix data and let you know a little bit more. I just got in myself, and I'm learning how to pull it. And keep in mind, this is just C Click Fix data. There are other cases that are initiated in other ways, but C Click Fix is very popular within our community, and that's something that we need to consider.
Sarah, that was my next question. I think this came up the last time we had this discussion as well. It's about the same number, but I think it was something like 80 or 90% of all the cases are generated from C Click Fix, right?
Almost, yeah, for sure.
Got it.
There are times where an inspector will initiate it, but to be honest, it's because we're already out there inspecting something else. And if you inspect somebody for a broken guard rail, and you see three other broken guard rails within that road, you're going to want to get them at the same time, because if they feel upset, they may go out and C Click their neighbors, and then you're going to be out there a week later anyways. So, we try to be proactive in that way, but not an excessive amount.
So, you used the example of one guard rail and identifying two other broken guard rails. Are you looking for problems that are not identical when you're out there? So if the inspection department's driving down the street, or they're saying, "I'm looking for problems at all of these houses," not malicious way, that's not what I'm accusing anyone of, just trying to figure out what's the, philosophically, what's the goal?
The guidance that I gave recently, within the last couple months, was try to focus on what you're inspecting that one house for.
Okay.
Don't go too far off of that, because then you're just going to create a whole bunch of additional cases that we can't necessarily handle right now.
The rationale behind doing the multiple houses in the past is because you want to come off as unbiased.
Also, yes.
If your employee is out there and essentially turns a blind eye to a violation, you could say, "Hey, that's illegal, you can't just..." I mean, you're trying to be as across the board as possible.
As fair, as possible, within reason.
But we're not saying there's a safety violation, therefore we're going to report that, versus a violation that is probably not that big of a deal. We're not identifying things as not big of a deal.
Not at this time, no. I will say, though, that if staff is about and we see a safety issue, we will flag it, no matter what. So even if it's, if we went off a guard rail and we saw a roof was caving in, we're not going to say, "Oh, it's not a guard rail, I can't do anything about that." We're going to do something about it.
Perfect.
So these are all the C Click Fix options, and we're going to look at these a little bit later. But I just wanted to give you an idea of, this is what a resident or somebody that would like to submit something on C Click Fix sees when they go through there. It is just as straightforward as that. And keep in mind, on C Click Fix, they can also keep themselves anonymous at this time.
I was not expecting chicken issues.
Yep.
To be on the list.
We get plenty of those.
Chicken issues are a huge...
Yeah, chicken issues come up a lot.
Chicken issues are a huge... Not that like, I just, throughout communities in Wisconsin, everybody, chickens is a hot topic. It's a weirdly hot topic.
People feel very strongly about chickens. Either they like them or they don't, and that comes up in C Click Fix more often than you'd think. There's a couple on here that even I'm not familiar with. Keep in mind, C Click Fix is for all departments and divisions. This is, I'm trying to keep us focused on just community development right now. So, boat launch, I don't know, but there were two last year, so I'm not sure what that all entails for a C Click Fix. Or cemetery, I'm thinking it might be related to maybe a stone tipped over, or maybe a tree down there, not sure. But, again, a lot of the ones that I want to focus on tonight are just community development-focused. So what is staff's recommendation based off of our current policy and the issues that we see within it? This comes from a collaboration of staff and Matrix. I've spent, Jerry and Kim both, all of us have spent some time talking to Matrix about the issues that we're seeing in code enforcement and what they would suggest as a recommendation, and we all landed in exactly the same spot. We need to prioritize somehow. We can't keep going out and treating every single case as the exact same priority, because we all recognize that some things are major, some things are minor. So, what are we going to do about it? This is the best suggestion that I saw that I truly think makes the most sense for Oshkosh. We have a priority with different tiers. Your first priority is your highest tier, it's your red. It's something that you want to tackle right away. You have your greens that are tier two. They're important, but not quite as life safety concerns as your top. And then, of course, your lower priority would be number three. So what would be considered a tier one priority? Now, I'm going to whip through these a little quickly, but we're going to go back, because I want to give you guys some time to kind of just think about it and work through it, and then we'll, we're going to hit you with a couple fast ones as to where you think they land on the tiers. That was mainly the purpose of tonight. So tier one, this is staff's recommendations. We would think anything health, safety hazardous-related. So if we suspect that something is causing a life safety issue, we would want to address it immediately. So the response time would be a day or as quickly as we could reasonably handle that and get them out there. I would also ideally like to eventually be proactive with these. If we see these in the community right now, we're handling them as we see them, but we don't have a chance to go out and actively look for them and to try and get ahead of them as they come up. I'd like to be more proactive with these situations in particular. Some of them being severe exterior maintenance concerns. One of the things is sump pumps. I know it sounds crazy, hear me out. If you have a sump pump that is putting water out over your sidewalk, and then you have mold and other things that are going, it becomes a very slippery atmosphere for people that are either walking, biking through that area. Also, during the winter, if that sump pump is going out over the sidewalk, it becomes frozen ice, and then we have an extremely slippery situation. So, it may not seem like sump pumps discharged going over sidewalks is a life safety issue, but I would argue that it is, and it's something that we need to consider. It may not be it immediately, but the faster we can catch it and take care of it, the faster it's remedied. There are other possibilities, and we'll discuss these a little bit later, such as grass and weeds. People feel very strongly about tall grass, and if we want to handle those cases, we have to address them quickly. You don't obviously want to wait a month before you address a tall grass situation, because then you're dealing with much, much taller grass. So, and then another possibility that I kind of put out there tentatively is exposed pools. That does come up every once in a while within some of our certain neighborhoods. They feel that if they see somebody's pool in their backyard without any sort of barriers preventing children, and I believe we have in our code a requirement that they must have something.
A fence or retractable cover.
Yep, they must have something. So if they don't, then we would say, "That's a life safety issue." Kids find them very attractive, and we would want to make sure that we're enforcing that faster than any other minor issues that might come up. So then, what's tier two? Tier two are violations that have the potential to cause damage or life safety issues to public, but they aren't there yet. They're close, but they're not there yet. We have a little bit of time before we have to address those immediately. One of them being junk and debris. Another one is zoning violations that we feel are a little more major, working without a permit, and then more of your intermediate exterior maintenance issues that we see pop up in the community. Other possibilities, again, can be grass and weeds. It's going to be up to council to determine where they feel some of these things land. We just need a little direction. And upper vehicles, noise violations, we do hear those come up every once in a while, so we just want to know where you feel they might land. And then the idea is that the response time would be within a week for our tier two issues. And then tier three is considered more minor issues that we see. Minor zoning violations, parking, some people feel very strongly about parking, some people don't. Just need a little guidance. Unregistered vehicles, garbage cans being visible from the road, home occupation usage, animal care complaints, signs in the yard. There's a lot of other things that come up that we need a little guidance from council as to where you feel they land on the tiers, so that if you don't think it's a tier one or two, we'd like to just make sure that we're using staff time in the best way possible. So, with that being said, what tier priority are we thinking? This is pretty much all of my presentation minus one or two slides at the end about education and communication to the public, but I wanted to open it up a little bit more to council to see, how do you feel? What are cases you feel strongly about that you wished we were being more proactive with? Or do you feel are minor and can become a little bit of a lower priority within our community?
Personally, I'd like to see a re-centering on, and I know you and I talked about this, on the most important issues. And because code enforcement has been kind of scattered throughout, and it's gotten a little bit convoluted, and we deal with weights and measures as well, I'd like to focus on what matters the most first. And I don't think that necessarily pertains to what software we use, although I would prefer to move away from C Click Fix personally. Instead of having this tit-for-tat game that neighbors do, focusing on the core aspects matters the most to me, and then building it out from there. I like the tiered system, I think it's very helpful. I think if we show the public this, that they will understand it a bit more. We're not going out there and looking for trouble, but I think if we re-center things, that'll build a lot of goodwill in the community itself. The other thing is, some people just don't like code enforcement. And I'm sorry that they feel that way, but this is what we do, and this is what we have to do in order to comply with state law and have a beautiful community. So, for me, those core items matter the most, the health and safety things matter the most, and then building it out from there.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to know the data behind what's actually being reported, in terms of the highest, you know, I know tall grass is a big one. We touched on that one already, right? But, and I, it may not be tonight.
I did pull some.
But like, you know, top 10, top 5, whatever, I don't know what it is. But what is, and then determining, because it's a value judgment, I'm going to reference what you just said, I want to focus on the most important issues. There's eight people, 10 people sitting at this table, and the most important issues, there are 10 different most important issues to 10 different people. So it's a value judgment of, a collective value judgment of who, who's determining what's most important on that list or out of any list, I guess.
And I'll give you a little different take. I agree, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. I'm, this is going to sound familiar, because it's the same thing I said last time. Sarah, I like the tiered system very much.
Okay.
My concerns perpetually are that we can go back five slides. 230 of these per month, and we investigate every one of them with photos and reporting and so on. I'm not saying go back to it, I'm saying, my concern is still the volume of this and how expensive, whether we're looking at the most important things, the least important things, we are investigating in every single one of them. By investigating, I mean, we go there with people and take pictures, and we come back to your office and load the pictures into software, and we type it up and put it into a different piece of software. And I asked the question at the time, it's a couple hundred bucks every time we do that at least, in staffing time, it's expensive. That's the problem. So, the tiers are great, I think we need that no matter what, we need to manage expectations with the public as to what happens more than that. So, my example last time would be the same as now. If I report graffiti on C Click Fix to the police department, they say, "We got it." They don't go out there and take pictures, come back here, put it in Evolve Public, report it back, tell me about it, it's done and over with at that point in time. And there's a judgment call on that department's.
For sure.
Work flow, more or less.
Yep.
Jerry, you don't have that luxury currently. The rules are only, if I tell you there's something wrong, you go there and look at it. That's an awful waste of time, because it's long grass, almost always. Or cars, or it's not the life safety issues first all the time, that won't be the number one thing.
No, it's not.
So yeah, we need to prioritize it for sure, but I think most importantly for me is we need to find a way to get that number to an appropriate number and not waste your staff's time doing things that they shouldn't be doing. And I know that comes with prioritizing it.
It does.
But that's part of it for sure.
Part of that is documentation, in case it does move forward to any sort of court citations, we want to make sure that we have that record created.
But you can do that without putting it in Evolve Public, right? You can do, you can system, you can keep all the notes you need to do that.
Also, yes.
It doesn't need to be public.
To Matt's question, I do have the top eight for C Click Fix. Again, don't have it for all of our inspection stuff. The highest is parking issue on street slash sidewalk, that's over 400. Then the next one is tall weeds at 380. Property maintenance comes in right below with 348, and junk debris on private property comes in at 340. You could almost combine those two, because they tend, people tend to use them interchangeably sometimes with what they're putting in. Then we also have parking in grass is 189, so parking is up there. Pothole pavement curb is 158. Snow shoveling ice is 101, and garbage recycling, I missed that one, that one is 194. So those are all of the ones that hit over 100 complaints last year.
All right. I have an opinion, as I typically do, but I'm not opposed to the tiers. I think you're never going to get to tier three, based on looking at it, I think that's the flaw in what I see. I also don't think that we should sit and go through each of these, how important they are. I think, to Matt's point, we're going to have very different opinions on what's important and what's not. What I think staff should do, and then council can inform it, or not, I think this is, this can truly be a staff-driven thing. I think that your department, I'm in hospitality, I think your department is guest services in a lot of ways. I think you have guests that are angry with another guest, you have guests that are angry with the city, and then you're on the front lines to say, "I agree with this," or "I don't agree with this," or "I'm going to mediate, I'm going to referee." I think that's a lot of what your prerogative is. I don't think treating every guest the same because we happen to be on their hallway in the hotel makes a ton of sense. I think you can treat them a little bit differently. So when we talk about the rails, I think we can treat them differently. As long as you treat everyone differently, you're not treating anyone, you're not discriminating against anyone. So what I would ask, I think, and maybe this is a bad idea, and I know that there are six other people here that'll tell me if it's a bad idea, I think you need to come up with kind of what's your holding statement? So as a city, this is our view on code enforcement. We think it's because we want to ensure that there is beauty and safety in the city, and to that end, we're going to focus on those things first, or whatever it might be. I think staff can truly come up with that, and you can almost have a mission statement for your department, and then everything can kind of drive back to that. You said you did, what is it?
I don't remember, I actually had it in my mind, I took it out.
Yeah.
Thanks, DJ.
Sorry.
It had something to that effect of, "We're trying to make sure that we're focusing on the health and safety of our community." Education was also extremely important.
Yeah.
It was about two paragraphs when you clicked on just policy and code enforcement.
And I think two paragraphs is way too long. I think it needs to be one sentence.
Which is part of the reason why I took it out.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Because it was a little wordy for a PowerPoint, I like things.
And I approach everything I do up here from just a business perspective, and I know the government isn't business, and so you don't have to repeat that to me. But I think that if we can come up with a sentence that is, "The Great Wall's mission statement is bring joy to families, and everything we do drives towards that." That's our employee motto, that's our guest motto. If the Great Wall, if Oshkosh, Wisconsin's mission is to bring joy to families, which it's not, could be, but it's not, then you're going to say, everything has to come back to that. Is that broken guard rail causing a safety concern? Maybe. If it's not causing a safety concern, should we provide, should we be doing code enforcement at all? Maybe it just looks bad. Is it so ugly that it's going to hurt the neighborhood and the resale value of the neighbors? If it's so, then maybe we should enforce it. If not, maybe it just isn't our aesthetic. Maybe we don't like bright purple on a guard rail. Is that the city's prerogative to decide? I don't think so.
You were looking at the house on Irving, weren't you?
That was at your house. That was at your house.
Sorry.
Anyway, I think the tiers are a way to approach it. I don't see you ever getting to tier three. I think you're gonna have so many tier ones and tier twos.
To start, potentially.
Yeah.
Ideally, I'd like to get through that.
A hundred percent. But I think you're always gonna have more and more and more tier ones and tier twos. And maybe not.
I can't say for sure.
I don't sit in your chair. But I think you're really, those things that we're gonna deem, or someone may deem unimportant, are gonna be the most important issue for that retired person on a fixed income that is staring at that ugly thing across the street from their house all day, every day. And they're just gonna say, "Oshkosh, Wisconsin doesn't care about me. I've complained to them over and over again. I've driven on software. I've made phone calls. I've written letters. I've emailed city council. No one's giving back to me." And it's because it's a tier three issue that none of us think is important. And so I think that maybe we're setting ourselves up for failure by having that tier three category and lumping these things into, rather than saying philosophically, "This is how we view our place in the city, and this is what we're gonna tell people." You can have scripting, we do that for our call center, scripting to say, "Hey, this is not the highest priority for us right now. Let me give you some information on how you can communicate with your neighbor better."
That's the plan.
That would be awesome.
There's a little bit more.
I'm sure there is. And I'm not, I'm not trying to shit on it to the word. I know I'm on TV, but I don't understand it differently quickly. But that's how I think we, we can approach this in a way that's gonna allow people to say, "Our government is working for us, and they're busy," rather than, "They told me it was tier three. They're never getting to it."
We would never approach it that way, not at least while I'm here.
Great.
So I hope you can believe me on that one. We have
My comments are extremely similar. I think what you're asking for here is your ability to make subjective calls, right?
Yep.
And I think that's fine. I've done quite a bit of code enforcement in my time. We have, in communities I've worked for, told people, "You need to go to mediation. We're not enforcing your stuff anymore."
Absolutely.
So if you need this council to say, "Yes, you're allowed to do that," I'm more than okay saying, "Yes."
We need this council to say that.
Okay.
Yes, please.
And I, yeah, the tier system, I, if you guys wanna use it, go for it. I'm not gonna get into picking what's a tier one, tier two, tier three. I think that's on you guys. I just also would like to make sure we know that we still want to be responsive. We still, even if we think it's a petty issue, maybe it doesn't have to be an actual citation, actual report generated, but we're at least talking, people saying, "We got it. We know your neighbor has long grass. We'll get to it." And that's maybe what you're gonna say right here.
Absolutely. Yep. So to DJ's points, yes, a little discretion is gonna be needed if that individual sees that same issue across the road and brings this to us multiple times. Staff does have the discretion to say, "You know what? This might land in a low priority, but because of the number of complaints we receive, because of the issue that this seems to be causing, we're gonna bump it up a little bit and make sure that we still get a chance to address it." But for me, the main point of this is gonna be education. We have this perception in Oshkosh that code enforcement is revenue-focused, and I would like to change that perception. I'd like to dial it back and re-change it to just education. Let's make sure residents in our community know our codes and understand why we're talking to them about this issue. And we're gonna approach it
Oh, sorry.
in a gentler way so that they understand what we're talking to them about.
Maybe that's something we get to in the mission statement too, where, I mean, we can literally, we want compliance. We don't want your money.
Yep.
Right? I mean, we ultimately want everybody to comply with our codes.
Compliance is the goal.
And everything be sunny. We don't, we don't wanna use this for tax or whatever we're gonna call it.
Absolutely.
And really, that helps inform staff and staff time better. And what we're utilizing staff time for, what we're actually going out and investigating, what we're taking photos of, what we're loading up into Evolve Public, those kinds of things could probably help us refine what staff is looking for discretionary terms on what to prioritize and what not to. Eighty percent of this is a staff-driven process at the end of the day.
It sure is. We love it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is, you know, operations, it's policy, but it's also operations. And the three of you have sat down and talked to many more people than I have about this and came up with, this will help us have a tool to do this job well. And so I absolutely will support that. And just because you asked the question, I will say that I cannot support grass being a level one.
Level one higher law, I wasn't
Other people may think that
Level one is the highest.
Okay.
Highest priority.
I would agree.
I was gonna ask, like, and not tongue-in-cheek, like, is this something where a drone could be used or other technology instead of having to physically drive out?
I've hitched bicycles.
I don't love the idea of deploying drones.
Yep.
I don't see that going over.
Remote external processor.
They email a lot of emails about that. Ironically, grass is probably one of the easiest ones to fix, though, right?
It is.
I mean, a lot of these issues, we can't physically come and fix your window. We can't physically come and put a new roof on your house.
Yes. And we're using grass. Grass can mean a full yard that has very high weeds, and then we're also getting C Click Fixes for grass around a little bit of a pole. So we'd like the ability to be able to say, "I'm not gonna go after that person for that little bit of weeds that are showing there. We'll remind them that they need to weed, but I'm not gonna take that through all the way."
The only other thing that I am concerned about is if, because we get residents now who will email the seven of us for a, what could be a C Click Fix issue or whatever, and then you're getting emails from seven of us. I don't wanna see that be a way to just bypass the system or bypass the steps because, well, you've got no seven emails on something, but just because somebody knows to email us, I don't think that should automatically jump priority.
We don't prioritize it in that way. No offense to council. We take what you send to us with a grain of salt as something that's important, but we still put it within the system of discretionary factors.
You mentioned that we're not gonna, we're not gonna advocate if someone has some weeds, but we're not gonna use code enforcement for it. I think maybe you need a fourth tier if that's the case, but only to say
Education.
Educate, or not. Like, that's, I think that sometimes it's okay to say, "Hey, these two neighbors aren't getting along. We're not getting into that."
If you all are okay with that, I would love the ability to say, "We are gonna stop working on code enforcement on these two properties. We're gonna send you to mediation, and we're not gonna address any of these issues going forward."
Right, because I've gotten a number of complaints with, sorry, good.
No, sorry, yeah.
I've gotten a number of complaints with two neighbors who have beef over, say, a fence, right?
Or a tree.
And the reality is, is that it's not really the city's issue. And so if we just drop them each, you know, two pieces of information or some mail about mediation and saying, "We're recommending that you guys go to this. This is not a city problem," unless if it starts to involve city property or, you know, potentially other city operations, that would save staff a lot of time. That would save your team a lot of time. That would make everybody's lives a bit easier.
Absolutely.
Sarah, that's sort of what I was suggesting all the way through here to that degree, and you know this, because we've talked about it. But I'm still, I read a bunch of C Click Fixes today. When Public Works gets one, when something gets referred to Public Works, it ends right there. When something gets referred to police or whatever, streets, it ends right there. Why doesn't this department have that same purview to end it right there if they want to? They just reply in the app, "Noted. We got it." And then you decide what to do internally. If that means you send a letter, that's great. I just think you need to have the same ability, the police and every other department that uses the same software, to say, "Yeah, we heard you. We got it, and we'll handle it." And then you handle it how you want to. Without saying you designated this to this, do that internally. I mean
That's what we're planning on doing.
Okay, just so I'm clear.
Yep. I wanted to have this first.
Yep.
And then we're gonna make some changes.
That's what I thought.
And probably handle things going forward.
Ultimately, the, the software is the problem here because people use it inappropriately, and that makes
They do.
your job impossible. So, but to that point, and again, not to belabor the thing, other departments are using this correctly in the software the way it's intended by just taking the information in, noting it somewhere, and carrying on with their lives. That makes it really easy. But
I'd also like to adjust C Click Fix a little bit, but again, keep in mind, community development is only a portion of that. It's the fact that people are using it. I know James and I have also talked about that neighbors are using it against neighbors. It's not just in community development. They're using it across the board against each other. So we'd like to just alter a little bit on the options that they have. Maybe leave it restricted from that 35 to more of the important things, and make sure that that's still open and available to them, but reduce it just a little bit.
And eliminate the anonymous reporting?
If that's what council would prefer, we could eliminate the anonymous reporting.
Well, for tenant landlord relation type stuff, so safety stuff, if you're, if you're a tenant somewhere, you need to report your landlord because of retaliation.
But we should have a process outside of C Click Fix for that.
Correct, but we don't.
Let's do that.
It's coming.
Cool. I vote yes.
Also, yes.
Good to note it.
If you're willing to file a complaint against your neighbor, you should agree and affix to it. Tenant landlord retaliation is a different matter.
I disagree on that one kind of wholeheartedly. I do think that we're setting up tenants for failure if we can't let, people have anonymously told a handful of issues that you guys probably got, and media, like, "I don't wanna piss off my landlord. Please tell somebody."
Wait, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we get rid of it. No, we need, we need to do better at that anyway.
Yeah.
This should never be that mechanism.
I still think if you're just a person at home, your landlord's being crappy, hasn't done a heat or something, you click a picture, you're using C, I feel it's confusing if we have a different process for the person that's trying to, to inform us that their landlord is now holding up their end of the bargain.
Sarah, potentially, can we have some sort of happy median on that and say that the only way you could be anonymous is if you have a tenant landlord issue, there perhaps will be a box you can check, and then you can remain anonymous from there?
I will find out.
Okay.
I don't know. I think rental property in general is a sensitive subject that we're gonna have to discuss at some future point, but right now, we'll let that go.
Can we get some education out when we get to the point of changing this to some degree that, to let people know that
Absolutely.
everything they report will not be expected.
Because you know I love educating members of the
But that's the problem currently. Everybody knows that if they press the button on the thing, you're gonna show up.
Yes.
And that's problematic. That's why it's used in a weaponized manner.
It absolutely is. Part of the reason why I wanted this very vocal, very public council workshop is to be able to say, "Hey, public, I took it to council. We're making some changes."
Well, and to that point, for some of these kind of neighbor disputes, saying that you have to put your name on this will serve as a deterrent for the very easy, just lobbing off complaint after complaint after complaint, where the reality is maybe you should talk to your neighbor instead of talking to the city first.
We do have mediation services available within our community.
I also wanna make sure we understand that those neighbor disputes are the minority of people.
Oh, for sure.
But are, tend to be the majority of cases.
And staff.
But are the minority of people.
Absolutely.
So the majority of, like, neighbors are not continually fighting with my help. At least in my experience, they're not continually fighting with neighbors.
Yep.
Sarah, briefly into the second part of this with Evolve, because I know that's coming at some point also. I don't like the, and you've heard it from other people as well, I know Rebecca and I have talked about it as well, the public-facing nature of Evolve, I don't think is great when it comes to code enforcement or when it comes to building inspections and that kind of stuff. I don't need Carl to know what kind of building permits I pulled with my name and address and picture on it on a public website. Same way, I don't want anybody to know if I didn't mow my grass with my name and picture and address on it because it's just not great policy. I don't think there's any, I mean, I could be wrong. Is there a reason that needs to be public-facing with a picture of my address with my name on it and my home?
I am not aware of any reason why it has to be. I do know that we've run into some issues with the Judicial Privacy Act and Safe at Home laws about that. It's definitely something we're taking into consideration as we look into different softwares.
And that's coming at some point when we change the rest of this as well, but it would be awesome to not have a picture of DJ's house show up with DJ's name when he doesn't mow his grass.
Correct.
You refer
All the time.
Support that.
For sure.
You referenced different software. And C Click Fix is a communication tool.
Yes.
Evolve is the management tool.
Yes.
Let's kind of separate those right now. You're looking at
A different management tool.
something else that can do both, that can be more integrated-ish?
Yes. We're getting a little off-topic, but yes, Evolve is
I mean, there's
not as user-friendly as I'd like it to be.
I have a concern in terms of, we want and we ask for citizen engagement routinely, and some of this is centering around, we don't want them engaging with us. And so we just don't like some of their engagement with us, and we would like to see less of it in certain forms. That's what this discussion is kind of centered around-ish. So I'm not against changing. I'm not against trying to improve this process so it's more efficient internally.
Okay.
But there's also needs to be a mechanism that people have easy access to use that's still professional and responsible. This may be the Wild West right now, right? A little bit, and
That's a good analogy.
And that maybe it just needs to be more professionally done.
Absolutely.
You know, in terms of how it communicates to us and then how we communicate back to them. I agree with, you know, there's some of these things that are so, that are customer-facing or public-facing that, does it need to be? Does it have to be? You know, I don't think so. I think there was, there's a level of transparency. That's a lovely buzzword that people like to use, right?
That's important, communication and transparency.
And it created It did create that, but it's also created unintended consequences. And so this is just trying to corral those unintended consequences a little bit, right?
I think we went too far on the scale. We're trying to tip it back over without going too far on the other side.
And the only thing, I don't think, forgive the pun, that I should be too far in the weeds on
I do.
Right? Somebody had to do it.
Oh.
In terms of deciding what tier one, tier two.
Forty-one minutes.
But I worry about, like, the broken windows theory, that if we're not addressing certain minor things, it will just naturally lead to more moderate and major things. So
Agreed.
Just, that's my messaging. I don't expect an answer. I don't want one. I would just consider that in terms of, it's, even grass being too long can lead to other moderate and major things down the road if not addressed reasonably.
I think that's a good point, and that's also part of the reason why I wanted to have this very public council workshop, because staff has been listening to council talk about matrix and C Click Fix and code issues that we've been having over the past. And I've gotten the sense that some of them worry that council doesn't want any code enforcement at all. And I don't think that's what you guys want. You just want it to be that balance within the community. We still wanna stay on top of the issues that we're seeing, but make sure that people aren't feeling that we're persecuting them either. So again, just trying to find that balance within it. And I think that's kind of the point you were trying to make.
That's where I sit on this issue. I'm not saying we should drop code enforcement at all. I just think we should further refine it. You know, looking at Evolve, looking at C Click Fix, we can improve the UI on this without saying that we're being less communicative with the public. Even if we're not going to go out to a certain location hypothetically and not taking pictures and not opening cases and whatnot, we can still communicate with people and say, "Okay, here is what we received. Here is what we typically do in these kinds of cases," so that there is a presence, there is a touch. People feel like that they're heard without, with us, you know, prioritizing staff time appropriately.
Absolutely.
We can walk and chew gum at the same time in that regard.
Yep, absolutely. We've talked about that as well.
And Matt, I agree with you that we definitely want the public to engage with us. And I, I don't want it to sound, and I know you don't either, I don't want it to sound like we're wanting less engagement. I think we're wanting some less engagement, though, in the sense that we don't need to be the first stop. So I have a neighbor that if his grass got too high, I would think, "Oh, my God, something's wrong." And I have a neighbor that if their grass gets too high, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, their grass is high again." But maybe I should have the same reaction to both, and it's okay to knock on their door and be like, "Is everything okay?" I think if we have, if we foster that kind of energy rather than just responding to say, "Oh, we're calling the principal on you," that, that might be a good thing. I hear the, I hear the broken windows issue, and maybe after, maybe that's one of the questions we ask. Have you tried to talk to your neighbor yourself?
That is what we did in the previous municipality I worked at. That was the first question we were required to ask, is have you spoken to your neighbor?
Yep. I think you are both correct, Matt and DJ, and I'm, I'm still right in the middle. And I see, I look at this all the time. I like the app. I don't dislike it. I don't wanna get rid of it. But it's used so appropriately, Mr. Mayor, by Public Works and police, and they address it. And the notification you get back is in the app. If I type something in and say, "Dean, I hate this. Here's a safety thing," I get a notification back, "Please just address this." They, they can type right back to you. So you get the gratification of being heard and noted, and you can just plain carry on. You doesn't go take pictures or anything. That's all I'm after.
I agree.
And I will say to DJ's earlier point about, we do need to make sure that we're still addressing item three, or level three or whatever. And I know that you guys have said that you're confident that you will be able to, because even junk and debris, even though it's not a safety, it will likely not become a safety issue soon, will be a quality of life issue.
Absolutely.
And so that's something where, you know, those, and I trust you to manage how you work flow and how you get to it.
And I'll point out that if we say we're not doing code enforcement anymore, every single neighbor on the North Side will be in this room somewhere.
Exactly. Yes. I haven't fully worked out everything in terms of the policy, but for tier three, I do, in my mind, what I was thinking of was something along the lines of, we don't go out and inspect, but we still send a letter along the lines of, "Hey, we've received a complaint concerning this issue with this code. If it is in violation, this is something we would proceed with, but at this time, we're just trying to educate you and let you know that this is an ordinance, and you should be aware of it." That's all.
And I love the idea of a simple, easy-to-read, non-threatening, educational-based
Absolutely.
And I love, still love the idea of sometimes we don't send that letter at all.
Yep.
We've decided that this category of things on the first offense, you don't even get
Doesn't require a
Because then maybe that person was on vacation and they just didn't mow their grass.
Yep.
And staff has to be empowered to make that call somewhere. Again, not to keep saying the same thing, but every other department in this building is empowered to do that except for this one. And I don't understand why. So I'm glad you're working on it.
Absolutely. It helps to have council backing as we move forward with that change. So that's what I was hoping for. The last thing that I'm just gonna leave you guys with, because we all have to go to council in a little bit, is this obviously brought